Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting of March 8th. I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have ahead of us the agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move, do approve, second. It's been moved to second discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries. Okay. We have in front of us now the County Ditch 35 Public Hearing continuation of our February 22nd, 2022 on County Ditch 35. Now I'll hear from staff on progress. Craig Ossington.
Shall we move to take that off the table?
Oh.
You certainly could.
Okay.
I'll move to take it off the table for discussion.
It's been moved to second to take it off the table. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Purpose of today's hearing, Blue Earth County Ditch 35 is located in the north central portion of Mapleton Township and the southeast of the city of Mapleton. The primary purpose of the proposed improvement is to address problematic sloughing and sediment issues by rebuilding portions of the open ditch. The project includes a new lateral in the northeast portion of the watershed. Today's hearing is the continuation of the February 22nd, 2025 final hearing. It was continued after a landowner brought forward concerns that needed further discussion with the engineer and staff to be resolved. After discussions with the landowner, we were unable to resolve the concerns before today's continuance. Engineer Chuck Randall is here to outline the next steps, what we plan. Since it is uncertain how long it will take to resolve this issue, some of the potential solutions will require new notices to landowners. We are requesting that the board continue this hearing to a date and time to be determined.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. Okay. Chuck?
Good morning.
Morning, Chuck.
Chuck Randall with ISG. Joe Donkers with me. So we did put together a few options. What was brought up is the Jaeger properties just east of where the open ditch is being proposed to be repaired and improved. We were proposing to abandon a portion of the tile through those properties and they have somewhat objected to that. So we're trying to figure out a couple of solutions for them. We put together a couple of different options. Well, first backing up, without the abandonment of that line, the separable maintenance is lowered and the cost benefit ratio is in jeopardy of meeting the requirements of the statute. So if you look at a couple of, so we put together a couple of different options to, instead of abandoning that line, it could be downsized, downsized to match the rest of the capacity of the system. We presented three options to the Jaeger family through their attorney, Mr. Zimmerly. And then we also did discuss an option to potentially pay them a damage to abandon that line. I've not received back any feedback. I've received back a little bit of feedback that they're still reviewing those options. And I think if one of those options is chosen, it may change the benefits. So our recommendation is to continue that. Let us take a little bit more time and work that out. If there isn't a solution for the abandonment of that line, we may have to go back and look at some of the previous options that we discussed, widening the ditch, maybe a different alignment for the pipe, some of those options. But I think that, I think the landowners all, I assume, want the project to move forward, including the Jaegers. They just want to make sure that their line is covered and they're not left without a public line. In discussions with a few of the people on the project, and I did actually talk to the viewers about that potential damage, one note that we had was that the viewers should potentially update their redetermination cost to 2022 price, cost. So that'd be my recommendation, that we continue the project, allow us to work with the Jaegers and their attorney, and come back once we have something solved. I'd like it to be as soon as possible. You know, this ditch is in poor shape. We'd like to get it repaired and fixed. And if we could, if we could get something moving this year, that would be the most beneficial for the system.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
At this point, we've heard from the engineer and the drainage staff. And after further discussion with the landowner, as stated, there is not a solution. It has been recommended to continue the hearing to a date and a time to be determined. So this being said, that being said, this is a public hearing, so we will allow public comment. If you have new information to share and would like to comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. For those participating via Zoom, you can unmute your line by clicking the microphone button on the bottom of your computer screen or pressing star six on your phone. We also ask that you keep all comments to three minutes or less. If there's anybody here that wishes to come to the podium to state your name and address. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jody Swanson, 110 Pheasant Drive, Mankato, Minnesota. I'm also a District 5 citizen and a near lifelong resident of Blue Earth County. This issue drew my attention when I saw the article in the Free Press two weeks after the last hearing, which really alarmed me. Front page story, "Ditch Debate: Big Farm Drainage Upgrade Draws Fire." And as I read it, it seemed like we had, again, dueling experts. You know, on one side, we had the, you know, respected local engineers and it seemed like the support of the county. And the other side, you know, we had the Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, Minneapolis engineering firms, and various consumer groups. And I found myself alarmed by the article because it seemed like, gee, you know, here in Blue Earth County, we've been very concerned about our watersheds and our clean water, you know, for quite a while. You know, just a few months earlier, in November of last year, we have another Free Press article which talks about the uptake in Blue Earth County's polluted rivers in regards to Minnesota pollution control, you know, identifies 140 incidences of water quality issues in Blue Earth County. And I thought, gee, you know, we've got this ditch drainage system which clearly needs to be repaired. Can't we use this as an opportunity, you know, to really improve the system? You know, not just maybe, you know, hopefully, you know, get rid of a little erosion, but hopefully improve things. This is really an opportunity, you know, that I would really encourage, you know, the drainage authority, you know, to pause. My concern is that perhaps during COVID, you know, this petition came forward right before the beginning of COVID, and it made it hard to bring the right parties together, to do the creative collaboration, you know, perhaps that's possible, to make this a win-win. You know, a win for the farmers, a win for the rivers, and a win for the rest of us that need both and all of those things, you know, to come together. You know, the statute that I believe, you know, it has been referenced, that the threshold you have to be able to be comfortable with, you know, is 103.5, 0.015, and the considerations before the drainage work is done, and specifically subdivision one, talking about the environmental aspects and the public benefit. And it includes, you know, downstream peak flows and flooding, protecting or improving water quality, and include, you know, the effects on wetlands, the effects on water quality, the effects on fish and wildlife, you know, et cetera, et cetera. I'm sure you know this much, much better than I do. And so I really ask you to be creative in your approaches. What are our tools, you know, that we can do? And I appreciate, I'm happy that this project is going to get a little more time and a little more thought. You know, perhaps instead of, you know, asking, you know, a farm manager to sign off, you know, perhaps we go to the person that owns that land, you know, and hopefully, you know, whether it be land swapping, you know, we need lands, we need water storage, right, on our lands. We need that filtration. We don't, Blue Earth County doesn't want to continue to be this black spot in regards to, you know, what's going into our rivers, into the Minnesota eventually, and even the Mississippi River, you know? This is an opportunity. Let's make this be something that we can really be proud of. Maybe we even can have drainage naming rights. You know, let's take ditch 35 and make it something we're really proud of and get some good, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Jody. Your time's up. Thank you. Do we have anybody else that wishes to speak? Go ahead. Come and give your name, state your name.
My name's Jim Schul from Mapleton. I'm one of the landowners that are on the end of the ditch. It's very frustrating. I've lost faith in our engineers. Why wasn't this discussed two years ago? We've come to the final end, and now we're going to start over again? It looks like, for lack of a better term, a job justification. Pretty disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to come forward, or anybody on Zoom? All right. Then again, do we have anybody else wishing to come forward to speak?
Chairpeople, we have two people on Zoom that would like to talk.
Okay. Take, anybody there on Zoom who should speak?
Yes.
Yep. Go ahead. State your name.
My name is Don Aronoski. I am representing, I live in St. Paul, Minnesota, 1722 Princeton Avenue, and I'm representing the Friends of the Minnesota Valley, which is a group that cares deeply about the water quality of the whole entire Minnesota River. And we have members throughout the entire watershed. If I may share my screen to show a brief PowerPoint.
All right.
Is that possible?
If it works.
Okay. We, I have a few points to make, and then my colleague who works with the Isaac Waltonley, Philip Solcay, will speak after I do. So I will limit my remarks to three minutes at the most. We have a few points that we would like to have you consider before you make decisions. And I understand you're continuing this project at this point in this hearing. But we'd like to point out that the Minnesota River is already full and dollar damages are already occurring in Mankato because of cumulative increased drainage throughout the watershed, not just coming from Blue Earth County. We'd like to also point out that we believe, and Philip is an engineer, he'll go into the reasons, we believe that the modeling for the final engineering report does not count for all the flows, and that appropriate flow and backup information should be provided by rerunning the model. Philip will go into that in more depth. The failed ditch slopes, we recognize are a very significant problem, and we agree with and certainly support the idea that they should be addressed. However, the proposed solution requires additional modification to minimize instability and further sedimentation into the Minnesota River. We would like to ask you to please order an environmental assessment worksheet to gather more information before making a decision, because we are concerned about the downstream impacts of what is happening, or what is proposed to happen with this project. I'd like to show you this graph on the right of your screen there. You can see that the flow has increased, has more than tripled in the Minnesota River in this period from 1940 to about 2019. This is the reason why we are dealing with much more serious water quality problems through this time. The city of Mankato has already, the taxpayers have already had to pay $7 million, or will be paying $7 million for a rip project to protect the wastewater treatment plant. And there's been several million dollars already spent to armor or protect the water treatment plant, the intake water treatment plant. As a result of these high water and continuing high flows that we're seeing, you received a letter from the downstream county of Dakota, which has the largest stretch of the Minnesota River along its borders, and Minnesota River and the Mississippi River. They are very concerned about the cumulative decisions that are made, not only in your county, but throughout the entire watershed. And they're asking you to please take into account those downstream effects which affect their resources, their taxpayers, and everybody living there. I'd like to-
Mr. Chair, that's time. That's time. Thank you.
Go ahead, Philip, please.
Okay, thank you, Don. Did you go to the next slide?
Yes.
Okay, this, this slide shows a hydrograph of the runoff and table volumes for the three years, we know 100 here, rainfall events, and they are from the appendix house of the Blue Earth CD 35 final engineering report. These runoff volumes only include the surface runoff, do not include infiltration, and it's being intercepted by the drain tile system. If we were quick on the- If infiltration is added to the overflow hydrograph, it could be added to the receding side of the hydrograph to prevent something like this bed mine. The other flow would continue for several days, and the extended duration of the flow will erode the ditch banks and contribute sediment to downstream public waters. It should be modified to include infiltration is intercepted by the drain tile system. The Minnesota Department of Natural Resources requests that changes be made to the model and that the model be rerun. And the effects of these corrections into the proposed model to evaluate, to be evaluated before the project is approved. If you look at the total volume of drainage, it will double from what is shown on the table with the additional infiltration of groundwater. Next slide. This second item of concern is a proposed repair of portions of the old ditches that have experienced bank failures without the addition of any measures to prevent future bank failures. The slide on the left shows a photograph of a bank failure at Station 66, and a copy of the same station is shown on the right. It shows that the bank will be, the proposed slope will be unstable, it will be similar to what the existing bank is, except it will be slightly steeper and slightly deeper, which will make it more unstable. These bank failures are likely caused by erosion of the toe of the slope and groundwater influence in the ditch after water level drawn out. To prevent continued sedimentation from County Ditch 35 to downstream public waters, the slope of the ditch banks need to be must flatter, or the lower portion of the ditch needs to be stabilized with some form of erosion. This will protect the Minnesota River and Maple River from additional sedimentation. Next slide. So I think in summary, we request that we store water in Blue Earth through a watershed, do an increase in the volume in the Minnesota River. The Minnesota River is already full, and damages are already occurring. We request that you modify the hydrologic model for the DNR request and the February 14th technical memorandum with Isaac Waltonley, and that the existing hydrologic model does not account for the extended duration of flow. We request that you repair sloughing along County Ditch 35 and the open ditch to minimize future sloughing by using appropriate ditch slopes and erosion protection to minimize sedimentation in County Ditch standing bottom of the Minnesota River. And we also request that you order a DEAW to gather more information before a decision is made. So in summary, I'd like to thank you for your consideration. And Philip Solcay, and I represent the Isaac Waltonley as an technical expert.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else wishing to comment?
Just briefly, Chair, if I could, Dean Zimmerly.
Okay. State your name and address.
Thank you, Dean Zimmerly, Justice Attorney Hunter, attorneys. I'm on behalf of the Jaeger Properties and the Joe Jaeger Trust property. I just wanted to, you know, to say on behalf of my clients that we're not necessarily opposed to a solution for some of the problems that have been on CD 35, which we don't necessarily want to stand in the way of, you know, this project in some form. We just want to make sure that, you know, the solutions are, and the project, you know, is consistent with the drainage code and, and isn't, you know, unfair to my clients and their property. So I want to encourage the board to continue this, so we can continue working with Mr. Randall and the engineers at ISG to hopefully come up with a solution that will work and address those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing on Zoom? Or does, yep, go ahead. Just state, state your name and-
Orville Gartner, Mapleton. I have property right on, right on Ditch 35. We've been at this project for two and a half, maybe three years already. We've had engineers look at this many different times. Everybody comes up with a different flow. How many engineers, how many figures do you need before you can agree on, one, whether it's the county's engineer, private engineers, who it is? Whoever makes up these numbers, you can always come up with a different number. If you just do one little thing different, then you'll come up with different flows. The dollars that we already spent on this project should soon come to an end. And I realize we are not going to, everybody's not going to be happy with the end results. But somehow along, we've got to keep moving on, because these prices get out of hand, just like they have already. Either that, or you've got to forget about the project sometime and time. And I don't know if that's what they're after, to just forget about the project. But you've got to remember, what we started with was to get some of this sediment out of the thing, out of the rivers, because the banks are sloughing in. Okay? If we're doing that, we should be satisfying some of these people that always say we need clean water, which we do. I agree with that 100%. But sometime, I don't know when we come to a conclusion, but sometime we've got to make a decision to do these projects or else not even start them. I don't know which, which we got to do. But dollars and cents do come into these projects someplace along the line. And I hope that comes, that comes about before too long. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, if not, we will, we'll close that on public comments and questions and bring it back, bring, being there's no further comments, I'll close the public comment portion and bring items back to the board for further action.
Mr. Chair, a couple of questions.
Okay.
Certainly, I'm going to support tabling this. We need some more continued constructive conversations. But, I mean, I firmly believe we've got to fix this erosion, reducing the sentiment. That's, that's important. You know, if we have to go back and look at different options, we can do that. I know there's a lot of options. I can remember as a young kid, you know, our 20, 126-year-old family farmed. I asked grandpa, well, why does the ditch go right across the neighbor's property and not, not in ours? It's because we paid more to put the county ditch on the property line and things like that, to make it easier to farm. I understand nobody likes things going right through, but maybe we're going to have to look at options of moving the ditch or something to, to make that work. We've got to fix the sentiment that's really important. And I'm going to support a motion to table when that's appropriate.
Mr. Chair? I, I don't disagree with Commissioner Pap. I think we do got a couple other things we got to clear up here. And with the information we got today, I would entertain a motion to table this till time uncertain at this point, and we will renotice if, when time is appropriate.
Okay. And we have that motion. Do we have a second then?
I have a second.
Kevin will second that motion. Okay. All those in favor signify, by, say by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries. At this point, this concludes the County Ditch 35 Public Hearing. No further notice.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you, yes, for your time and for your comments.
Can we just take?
Yep.
Morning, Michael.
Good morning, Michael. I guess we'll continue here. I guess you're here. Introduce yourself, and then we'll start your-
Watercraft-
Water, water, watercraft inspections.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. For the record, Michael Stalbiger, Director of Property and Environmental Resources for Blue Earth County. Today I bring forward three items, and I believe the first item in your packet is the Watercraft Inspection Service Agreement. So this would be an annual renewal of the agreement that the county has with Waterguards LLC. They conduct, and for the last six years now have conducted, our watercraft inspections amongst the county's lakes at our public access points. This agreement and your resolution would authorize the county administrator to sign that agreement for another year's worth of service. The service is structured as such that we get 2,000 hours of inspections at all of our public access points across the county's lakes. That will be at a maximum cost of $50,408 for this season. Season runs through fishing opener for Walheim May through Labor Day, and it can extend beyond Labor Day if the season and the weather supports that and there's a demand for it. And we still have money left in that $50,000 allotment. We've been very pleased with the services that Watercraft or Waterguards has provided us the last several years. We do structure the agreement to make sure that we have over half of our hours on weekends and on holidays, which is the time that we can best educate and inform boaters and also do the inspection, so we've made sure that they, they staff those boat landings appropriately. You'll see that Scott Salisbury manages this program for us in our department, and he provided some statistics for you. 2021, we were actually down in the number of inspections completed compared to our overall average for the first five years of the program. That was also a trend that was recognized statewide. We wanted to make sure that we just didn't have inspectors who weren't completing inspections. But it turns out there were just fewer boaters hitting the waters in 2021 across the state. And then also locally, we can remember, we had some road construction around one of our busier lakes, Madison Lake, so that probably limited some interactions for some boaters as well. But as I mentioned, we're overall very pleased with the program. We find it is a cost-effective way to educate, inform, and then also look for any potential issues that would bring invasive species to our waters here in Blue Earth County. So I will answer any questions that the board might have, Mr. Chair. Otherwise, I would request authorization for us to enter into that agreement with Watercraft or for the county administrator to sign that.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Kip. Your second?
Second.
Second by Vance. Any discussion, questions?
Good program.
Yep. It seemed to be working well, so, all right. If there are no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries. Thank you, Michael, on that.
Very good, Mr. Chair. The next item in your packet is going to be a Board of Water and Soil Resources Well Sealing Grant Agreement. Blue Earth County has, for many, many years, since 1991 at least, supported efforts that would protect our ground and drinking water throughout the county. A very successful program that we've implemented through a cost-share agreement-
A very successful program that we've implemented through a cost-share agreement with property owners, where we'll get wells sealed to protect that groundwater and drinking water. Over the last 30-plus years, we've allocated $408,000 plus to help seal over 1,300 wells across the county. And most of that is through dollars that the county board authorizes annually for a local cost-share program. For example, in 2022, the board has authorized us to allocate $9,200 towards that program. That program is hugely successful. We always run out of those monies. They come on a first-come, first-served basis. And so Tim Grant in our office, who manages this part of our operation, looked for an opportunity to get a grant from the Board of Water and Soil Resources. They provided us funding through a 2022 Clean Water Fund Grant for $30,000 to complete additional well sealing. That will also be a cost-share program, and we'll have through the end of 2024 to utilize those dollars. We've been the beneficiary of other Bowser grants in the past for the same sort of program. Those dollars always get spent. There are plenty of wells left in Blue Earth County to seal, and those are direct conduits to our drinking waters and our other aquifers. So sealing those up goes a long way to protect the health of folks, as well as the health of our land and our streams and waters. So what we would be looking for here is the board authorizing an approval and acceptance of the 2022 Bowser Clean Water Fund Grant. I would be the delegated authority for that, so I'd be able to sign all of those individual agreements with individuals, property owners, provided the board agrees with that and authorizes that. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve that, Mr. Chair, or any questions, I'd be happy to answer as well.
Okay. It's been moved by Vance for both items. Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I guess I'd just say I appreciate this opportunity. When I hear we're always running out of money, that's a good sign. That means the program is working, the system works, and things like that. I'm not sure, you know, the match and the maximums are set. I think that covers a lot of wells. But I do know, from a personal perspective, there are other wells out there that you can't get them sealed for that reason, well, depending on the well construction and things like that. And as we look at some wells in our county, I've got one, I'm fully transparent, where my estimate was probably $4,500 to seal it versus that. Now we're looking at a match of less than 25% on those, and I guess we want incentive for those types of wells in the county to be sealed as well. So just kind of that point of information, it really depends on the type of well as far as what the cost is, and as it has to be pulled up, if it's been jacketed and all that lingo, I don't truly understand. I just understood when they said $4,500 or more.
You just pay the bill, yeah.
Exactly. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, if I can add, Commissioner, that's one of the beauties of this program through Bowser is so that $1,000 match and maximum are only for the county dollars. So we would be able to leverage county dollars and match that, and we can bring more money to some of those wells that are in those most strategic places that we want to make sure we get sealed that are costing significantly more than a normal well. So Bowser gives us a little bit of flexibility. We still have to have a match of some sort, but we can find some ways to be flexible with that, so, because there's a lot of those instances. The other thing I'll mention, too, there is we have lots of folks who want wells sealed. We're having trouble finding sealers for wells, and so there's a backlog to even get them sealed. So hopefully, we'll be able to locate some folks to help us move even more through that process.
Okay. Thanks, Michael. Then we have at this point, okay. You got the redistricting plan?
We need a motion.
Oh, that's right. We already have it, but I didn't have your vote, yeah. All right. All those that understand it, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries. And that's, yeah, for both, on the signatures on both. All right. Then we have, yeah, the redistricting plan, public hearing.
You're just excited to move on to this one, weren't you?
Oh, did I miss a well se...
No, we're good.
Yeah, we're good.
All right. You're just excited about redistricting. I understand, and I'm there with you. So the third item that we bring, the final item we bring forward from Property and Environmental Resources today is setting a public hearing for the Blue Earth County Redistricting Plan. As you're well aware, we're completing the redistricting for Blue Earth County Commissioner seats, and that's a result of the 2020 census. So this is a once every 10-year activity for us. Minnesota law is pretty clear on what we have to do for redistricting, and that includes establishing a public hearing before the board can officially act on their redistricting plan. The purpose of that public hearing will be to consider the plan or plans that are being brought forward for redistricting opportunities, and then eventually you'll approve one of those plans to set the five commissioner districts moving forward. We have worked as a department to bring information forward. We've shared some of that with you at work sessions, and we are also going to be conducting an open house next Tuesday afternoon, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., where we'll be able to gather some public feedback on any of the redistricting plans or get their input. But we would still need to officially have a public hearing, and that's what we're requesting the board to set right now. For some reason, this public hearing requires three weeks' notice, which is different than the normal notice. And so we are still going to be compliant with that if you pass that resolution today and we conduct that public hearing on April 5th, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. as part of the Commissioner meeting that day.
I'll move approval.
Okay. It's been moved for the redistricting plan, and then Vance seconds. Any discussion, further discussion? And that would be April 5th, and at 7:00?
April 5th at 9:00 a.m.
Or 9:00.
The open house will be next Tuesday from 4:00 to 7:00.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor signify, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries. Thank you, Michael. Anything else?
Thank you, Michael.
All right. Thank you. And we have, well, I guess we have Ryan. You're taking...
Got a lot of action items.
Bumping, you're bumping your... You're bumping Stefan today?
Yeah. What's happening with Stefan now?
He was prepared to take the bullet for me like any good assistant, and I was actually supposed to be in a jury trial today, but that was canceled. So fortunately, I'm able to be here and present this to you. I apologize that he's not here.
That's kind of where Ryan, Ryan...
I think you'd rather be here than at the jury trial, right? I agree.
All right.
The first action item on our agenda is consideration of bids for the 2022 Maintenance Gravel Crushing Contract. Only one bid for crushing was received this year. It was 23 cents per ton lower than our 2021 pricing. We did receive an additional inquiry, but there were some legality concerns with the bidder on... They asked what we thought was a fairly common question, but their legal, I think, had concerns over that that might be considered something questionable, so they decided not to put a bid in this year. It's peculiar. That's partially why we only received one bid, but with it being lower than last year's prices, I would certainly recommend approval. Yeah, I guess. I would move to approve.
Vance moves to approve gravel crushing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, carries.
All right. Action item number two is a resolution for the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Outdoor Recreation Grant. This is an application for the Bray Park Playground Equipment Replacement near the beach area. Staff has completed a draft outdoor recreation grant application for this playground equipment replacement force mill prior to March 31st, 2022. The county is requesting approximately $60,000 of state funds as a 50% match of the project cost. So with that, I would recommend approval of the resolution included in the board package.
Hey, do we have a...
Move to approve.
Second. Vance moves, and Kip seconds, the Minnesota Dean, our Outdoor Recreation Grant. Okay. Any discussion? All those then in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries.
Okay. Moving right along. Action item number three, consideration of bids for State Aid Project 007-607-011. This is for County State Aid Highway 7 Reconstruction in Mapleton from Borkard Street to approximately one-half mile south. The engineer's estimate was $1.28 million, and the apparent low bid was $1,202,342.75 from WW Blacktop. They were 6.1% under the estimate. And as you can see, we received seven total bids, so a lot of interest in this relatively small project, ranging from, again, 6.1% under the estimate to 28% over the estimate. WW did complete the County State Highway 57, North River Front Drive Roundabout Interchange at Highway 14 last year. A good experience working with them. I would recommend award of this contract to WW Blacktop.
So moved. It's been moved by Kip. Your second?
Second.
Second by Kevin.
I'm sorry, I should have passed this around earlier, is the bid tabulation, if you'd like to look at it.
Okay. Yeah, well.
Pretty larger. I can certainly get your digital format if you'd like.
I just get my magnifying glass out, but we're... Okay. I don't know. We'll be ready. We have a motion. Yeah, we have a motion in front of us. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries.
All right. Can't you get that a little bit smaller?
Yeah, yeah.
I could try.
Careful, Chad.
I appreciate he's trying to save paper.
Yeah, it's like the 11 cents a sheet. We're looking out for that.
There you go.
So I have a motion of approval on that one.
Yep.
All right. We'll move on to a little bit bigger ones, if you'd read. Consideration of bids for State Aid Project 007-640-005, County State Aid Highway 40, New Bridge, number 07595. This one's a little bit different story. The engineer's estimate was $404,224. The apparent low bid of the three received was from M&amp;K Bridge Construction out of Walnut Road, $512,428, or 26.77% over the engineer's estimate. I would remind the board that this project is partially funded with state bridge bond dollars, which does help us in addition to our County State Highway or local option sales tax funds that we use to complete this. So, bridge projects, we knew were going to be a little bit of an anomaly this year, especially given all the market influences that we're seeing. With that being said, we have the state dollars to assist on the 50% match for half of the bridge cost, so I would recommend approval and moving forward with this project.
Okay.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Vance.
Second.
Seconded by Kip. Any discussion regarding the 40 new bridge?
Why, I mean, I understand a lot of, there's so many changes coming right now with price of gas and labor and everything like that. Is that what's causing the big upsurge in... I would certainly think it's got a heavy impact. We've looked at our abstracted bids, and we didn't see any specific item that really jumped out and bid us, like it's just the beams or just the bearings or... I think you're seeing the fuel cost and speculation going into all the materials. You're seeing lead times being drawn out excessively, so that's impacting price. Labor costs are obviously up. The cost of doing business has dramatically spiked with all of the things happening in the world.
Okay.
Thank you. I wish I had a better answer.
Well, kind of, yeah, kind of expected here. Any other discussion? Has he had a motion in front of us? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries.
Okay. And I would probably remind the board, too, I believe last month I brought forward that we are getting a significant increase in our county state highway allocation. And the reason I didn't want to program another project was specifically because of this concern that we're going to see significant inflation. Hit us on our bids as we continue to open them. So action item number five is consideration of bids for State Aid Project 007-605-020 and others. This is for our 2022 Batuminus overlays. The engineer's estimate was $3,342,868.74. Minnesota paving and materials was the apparent low bidder at $3,693,192.58, or 10.48% over the engineer's estimate. Central Specialties was the second-in-high bid, 26.64% over the engineer's estimate. Again, this one is, I think, directly attributable to fuel price increases because of, you know, asphalt cement is a petroleum product, the aggregates, the trucking associated with it, and then obviously labor increases have been fairly difficult to predict. But with that being said, I would recommend award to Minnesota Paving Materials.
Okay. It's been moved by Kip. Your second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries.
All right. Action item number six is consideration of State Aid Project 007-598-031. This is a local road, local bridge replacement program grant agreement for the replacement of the County Road 169 Bridge. The grant amount is $519,224, or 100% of the bridge replacement cost. The Blue Earth County cost share is $258,491 for approach grading cost. So on county state highways, we get local bridge replacement money. It covers 50% of the bridge cost. On county roads, it covers 100% of the bridge replacement cost. With that being said, I would recommend approval of the local bridge replacement program grant agreement for County Road 169. Moved to approve.
It's been moved by Vance. Second?
Second.
Okay. By Kip. Where's that, where's 169 then?
Ah, that's south central, I guess I would say, just if I remember correctly, northeast of the Mapleton.
Oh, okay. Okay. I haven't get out there enough. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries. All right.
Are your engineers figuring the increase of petroleum and stuff right now? I mean, I know it's always hard, always hard to guess, but when you're getting your estimates out there, you know, it'd be good to say, okay, what's coming down the pike and... Right. So with our Batuminus overlay pricing, for instance, we look, and we know last year's pricing was this much, and we have to somewhat speculate because this was a relatively early bid being out in, in February, opening and being ready for a March board meeting. So theoretically, we should be getting better prices, so it'll probably continue to get more expensive the longer anybody waits. We use past pricing as our index, and then we add on typically, say 5%. Well, in this case, we should have added probably at least 10% on. So it's speculative, and it's a little bit of art, not so much a science, because it's difficult to come up with what some of those costs are going to be.
Yep.
When we go to prepare estimates for, say, County Road 11 or 12, one of those projects coming up, we'll certainly adjust our engineer's estimates to reflect what we're seeing to ensure that we've got adequate budget and capital within our program revenues coming in.
All right.
Thank you. Action item number seven is consideration of a project sponsor agreement between Blue Earth County and the city of Mapleton. The city of Mapleton was a successful recipient of a Local Road Improvement Program Grant. I was able to work with the city on their application and give them some assistance, and they were, they were one of the only successful recipient in Blue Earth County. As you may recall, we put in two grant applications ourselves. I believe there were two city applications and two or three township applications, and this was the sole winner. So fortunately, we are getting some of those dollars to work within Blue Earth County and help in our small cities. This is for the reconstruction of Borkard Street adjacent to the new K-12 school. So as part of these grant dollars, Blue Earth County has to act as the project sponsor, meaning we actually end up becoming the contracting agency, and the contractors' contract for that work goes through Blue Earth County. We make project payments. We would delegate the project management and construction inspection, et cetera, to the city because we just don't have people to do it, and it's not our road. But that's one of the things we agreed to when the city did apply for these funds. So this document is very similar to what you see in many of our other cooperative agreements. It just puts a lot of the onus on the city to perform contract administration, et cetera, and makes us the agency that will be responsible for the contract and the pass-through funds. With that, I would recommend approval.
All right.
So moved.
Kevin moves.
Second.
And Kip seconds. Any discussion, questions? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries.
All right.
Thank you.
Action item number eight is consideration of approval of the 2022 to 2026 Transportation Improvement Plan. The plan has been updated to reflect the updated and renewed county stated highway allocations. Increased funding has been shown, again, as contingencies as we discussed. As always, this is a roadmap. It's subject to change. This gives us a vision of what our future projects are and gives staff direction as far as what our objectives are and how we program these projects and program our funds. The local cities have been contacted about any projects that they have in the CIP. And there, as always, they're not obligated to a cost until we really get to a point where we develop an intent to cost participate agreement and they're certain that they need to move forward or want to move forward with the project. Some are put in there, maybe one is in there as illustrative. The rest of them, the cities would like to move forward with those projects pending any financial setbacks or anything of that nature. No public comments were received. We did an online outreach as well as notifications in the free press. You know, it's typical for these types of documents. People don't generally get too excited about planning level documents until you've got a project in their backyard or front yard.
Great.
With that, I would recommend approval of the 2022 to 2026 transportation improvement plan.
All right, it's been moved by Vance.
Second.
Seconded by Kip. Any further questions, discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries.
All right, just some quick project updates for you. County road 151 bridge replacement. Staff is still wrapping up approach grading plans and will be getting those in the mid-dut, some middle for their approval, likely a summer bid with construction in the late summer, early fall. We've kind of spaced out our bridge replacements, having three of them this year to allow staff to have time to properly cover them. County road seven in Mapleton, the project should begin as soon as conditions are fit this spring. We may end up utilizing consultant staff to help us with construction inspection because of the workload that our staff is facing, so we're coordinating that. County stated highway 10 and 72 in Vernon Center, project approval is still pending. As you may recall, this was being led by the city's consultant engineers at SEH. Project approval is still pending USDA RT review at this time. Deed review is also necessary prior to bidding any of the documents. And the city staff is hopeful to begin bidding the project by the end of the month. But I guess that's going to be highly dependent on their progress with plan approvals. So we're still hopeful to get that out and see where they come in with respect to the project budget. CASA 11 from 20 to 68, plans are approved. Right of way acquisition is still underway. It's moving along fairly well. We tend to plan to open bids on April 27th for a May 3rd award. And I guess the same could be said for CASA 12 from 26 East to CASA 2 with an April 27th bid opening and a May 3rd award. CASA 16 from La Sura River to 90, plans are under the design for summer bidding with work to be completed in 2023. And 16, I'm sorry, I just did that one, 13 from 169 to 1, project design is underway with SRF. That's again a 2023 project. We did develop some preliminary alignment improvements where we want to improve curvature to a 55 mile an hour standard, improve site distances. And we've identified those different alignment repairs and now we'll be coordinating those with the landowners who will be impacted by them. Good morning, Commissioner. CASA 26 from 57 to 22, project design is beginning with Bolton and Mink. Currently, a trail is planned on the south side of the road from Mary Lane to Highway 22. And we intend to use wayfinding signage to direct people via Country Club Drive to the trail section on Augusta Drive that would provide them with a trail or low volume road connection to the trail segment that connects to the Minnesota River Trail on the west side of the project. We looked at trying to maybe go under CASA 57 and Lion Valley Road and that would be extremely disruptive, extremely expensive. It'd be really cool to get done.
Yeah.
But I think right now it's just not in the cards budgetarily to put that kind of investment into that trail connector without knowing if there's adequate volume to really support it. So this would also offer connectivity across Highway 22 to the eastern segment of the Sagada Trail.
Kind of a nice.
My last item is just a friendly reminder about the annual joint county board and park advisory committee meeting. That's going to be held on March 24th at 6:00 PM in Good Thunder at the Thunderust.
Plan to be there. Plan to be there, okay.
We'll enjoy some updates on our general dashboard management plan. It's riveting stuff.
All right, sounds good. Plan to be there. Hey.
Any questions before I leave?
Any, any questions of Ryan?
I do not. Thank you for those reports.
Yep, thank you.
What are we hearing on weight restrictions?
Is it when they come off?
Yep.
Or when they go on?
When they go on.
Haven't seen it yet, so it's always a little bit of a gamble, but it should be coming out, I would anticipate, within the next week or two. I do know attempts are, it looks like they're going to start getting into the 40s next week, it would look like.
Yeah.
Do you get any advance notice of that?
Nothing more than what the public gets, that they're going on in four or five days.
Right, but we still have that opportunity to, you do need to move something from one area to the other to get that done before.
Yep. I can certainly let you know when I do hear something, but it's, it's probably about the same time that it'll be published in other media. Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you much, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Very useful, helpful. All right. Can we get our, our county attorney to talk in what, five minutes or so?
Actually, Mr. Chair, I'll make it easy to you there. I have nothing really to supplement to the report, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions of Pat? It's a good report.
Good report.
Looked it over, so with that.
Might you take a short break?
Should we take a short break and conclude?
Get our clean up to snuff on everything.
Fifteen minutes.
All right, fifteen.
Fifteen minutes?
All right.
Recede till then.
Okay, fifteen.
Okay, I'll continue, I guess, with Bob, with administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item is county board minutes for February 22nd.
So moved.
And moved, they're second. Moved second on the county board minutes. Any questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carries.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I move the bills.
Vance moves the bills. Clean seconds. Any question on the bills? You know, we haven't stumped administrator for a while. Do they ever have one? I don't even have one, but.
I don't have any.
How am I going to get that, get that music yet? Bring back the. All right, all right, all those in favor then approving the bills?
Aye.
Posed, carries. Human resources.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number nine in your packet is the human resources department agenda. I do have a few action items for the board's consideration this morning. First is authorization for the chair and myself to sign an agreement with the Minnesota Public Employee Association probation officers unit. This is a collective bargaining agreement just for one year for calendar year 2022. This particular group went through mediation and this is the result of our work there. We did end up with the same salary adjustment that we have with other bargaining groups of $1.50 per hour. Some of the other changes to the agreement is we did add language to the contract in the holiday section addressing Juneteenth, which would be considered a holiday if the state of Minnesota recognizes it as a state holiday. So it is not providing additional holiday time at this point unless the state of Minnesota makes a change as well. Otherwise, there's some language changes that we've done in other agreements, allowing the use of vacation time during the probationary period. We standardized some language in our funeral leave area as well as health insurance. And we did agree to a couple other kind of procedural things outside the contract. We have an assistant county probation officer position that the union felt was not classified properly. And so we agreed to send that through our outside consultant to review that to make sure it is classified appropriately. And if adjustment is needed, we would bring it here to the board for change. And then in terms of language in the contract regarding probation officer two, we have language that says at least 50% of the probation officers must be a PO2. We're agreeing to count the assistant probation officer and the temporary probation officer in that calculation, which would lead to an increase of one probation officer two as a result of adding those positions in our calculation. So again, no language change in the contract per se, but some kind of off-cycle types of changes as a result of that.
All right.
I'd be happy to answer any questions about that agreement.
Questions up? Vance moves. The public employees, MP, probation officers?
Second.
It's been seconded by Clean. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, carries. All right.
Next item is authorization to initiate recruitment for a park technician three in our public works area. This is sort of along the lines of the maintenance technician, one, two, and three redo of job descriptions that was brought to the board in the last month or so. We realized that we hadn't adequately addressed the parks technician positions. And so we needed to add this park technician three to kind of make it equivalent to our maintenance technician three position. So part of that overall review that we did and adjustment of those technician positions in public works.
Okay. Anybody?
I'll move approval.
Kip moves. They're second?
Second.
Second, seconded by Kevin. Any more discussion? All those say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, carries.
Next is authorization to initiate recruitment for a children's services case aide. This is a position that has been in the human services department for a few years now under a temporary agency agreement. So this has not been part of the FTE count for the county, but it has been a position that initially we weren't sure if it would continue. Now that it's been in place for a few years, we felt it was time to roll that over into a county position. The person that was in that position recently left the position and so it felt appropriate to bring it forward to kind of get it converted over to a county FTE.
All right.
I'll move approval.
Clean moves approval. Vance seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor, they say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries. I have some information.
Under the informational items then, we have filled a correctional officer in the jail. We've also filled a social worker in our child protection area. Also filled a part-time correctional officer. And we have the change to a start date of our licensed center specialist. We have initiated recruitment to fill a librarian position as well as a financial assistance case aide. We then did receive a couple of resignations of correctional officers, so we've initiated recruitment to refill those positions. I guess there's three of them there. And then received a resignation of a property environmental specialist position, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on those items.
Any questions?
Busy time.
All right.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, then I have number 10 in your packet is a memo regarding a library board appointment. Ms. Jeanne McGraw has completed serving her time and so Ms. Carrie Healy has indicated interest in joining the library board. And so bringing forward her name as an appointment to a library board for a term that will go through January of 2025.
Moved to approve.
I move Vance to approve.
Second.
And seconded by Kip. All right, are there questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 11 in your packet is the final financial status report for February 28th, so the second month of our fiscal year. You'll see our total revenues are 8.4 million against expenses of 14.3 million. So we're in that part of the year where we're drawing down on fund balance to cover expenses until the first half property taxes are received. I draw your attention to the revenue aligns the interest on investments. You'll see we're at a negative 800, almost $70,000. Most of that is a market valuation change as a result of kind of some of the turbulence in the markets today. The line above that, the transportation sales tax, you'll see we're 8.7% above collections in the prior year. So our transportation sales tax collections continue to remain strong. Other than that, things are tracking pretty well. It's early in the year, obviously, so not a lot to discuss at this point. At the bottom of that first page is the Ponderosa landfill, the Interprize Fund. You'll see there the total revenues are exceeding total expenses by about $200,000 at this point. The second page then has our available cash and investment balances. You'll see at the top, our total available funds sit at 67.6 million against our six-month need of 51.7. Total county funds, a little further down the page, sits at just over 127 million. So continue to remain in a very solid financial position. Happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Any questions about? All right.
I don't have any.
About as good as tumultuous times we are in. All right. I guess with that, is that everything, Bob?
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And we're down to our reports. Who's going to start today?
I can start, Mr. Chair. If you'd like me to.
Ah, we'll let you.
All right, mine's relatively short. I was out of town last week for a little while, but after our last board work session, I did have a conference call with my legislative committee meeting. It was just all informational stuff. And then we had a pre-meeting. We're going to be meeting with Senator this Thursday, I believe. So we talked a little bit about the items we're going to talk with her about. And then just dealing with several things with some planning and zoning items that are coming up and have been done in the past. And then our ditch stuff that we talked about a little bit this morning. I've been busy with that for the last week or so. That'd be my report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Kip, and then, well, let's see, Clean, now you want to give your last report?
Sure, mine's pretty small also. On the 23rd, I had a region nine meeting that, where we met with a gentleman from, to talk about renewable energy and that type of thing. EVs, the importance of that, how they're going to roll out the EVs, the charging stations. So they want it accessible to the public and they want to work with the private sector to do that. So it was an interesting conversation and more to come on that, I'm sure. I had an AMC board meeting on Friday, the 25th. Most of it was legislative and also looking at the strategic plan for AMC in the upcoming three years. On March 1st through the 3rd, we had the AMC legislative conference. So most of us were there and it was a good conference. And that's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you, Clean. Vance?
All right, on the 24th, I had a Zoom meeting with the Blue Earth Nicola County Safe Roads on Speed Messaging work, work group, trying to get a message out on how to get people to slow down, watch for stop signs, use their seat belts. The. They're pretty well-known that the deaths across the state of Minnesota have risen almost 27% since COVID started. And before that time, we were on a decline. And so it's, how do you get the message out to people that there's other ways to take care of your stress than taking it out on the road?
On that note, I drove to St. Paul on Friday for my AMC board meeting. There was not one car that didn't pass me. And...
And you were going to speed limit or...
Five over. Every car passed.
Except for the ones that didn't.
All of them passed.
All right. And then, of course, we had our work group, our work session on 1st. And then that afternoon, we headed up to the AMC Legislature Conference that we attended, the 2nd and 3rd. And then I had a South Central TCD meeting yesterday. During our South Central meeting, we always have the deaths and the serious accidents that happen given to us by the State Patrol. There was only two since the last meeting, but it's still, it has to do with speed, has to do with failure to stop for stop signs. Just, you know, one accident occurred because somebody was trying to get away from another accident that they happened before and then they passed a pickup and ran head-on into another one. So, but it's a process we're working on, trying to get people to drive safer and, you know, and see what the issues are out there. But that's the end of my report. Thank you. Of course, then, our new employees meeting this morning.
Good. Yeah, I was going to say that, but...
And that was very, very nice to see new staff and welcome them in, so.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Vance and then Kevin.
Since our February 22nd board meeting, as already been mentioned, participated in the AMC Legislative Conference. Our Environment and Natural Resource Policy Committee met as part of that. I also represented the county at the La Sura One Watershed One Plan Meeting on February 25th, March 1st, with public works as we look at CASA 13 realignment and some things like that. Orientation has been mentioned. And then pretty much my calls and conversations have centered around ditch 35 and ditch 56. That ends my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Well, I just have to add, like, the 25th of February, did have our Partners for Housing Board meeting. And then we did have our Pedal Pass Poverty the 26th. And we did raise over $90,000. Not as much as we have, but more than some years. Appreciate everybody here that contributed. It was in the MRCI building where they allow the, I think they have youth groups and stuff because they have netting up for even batting practice and stuff that was all up yet. So, yeah, it's a good building, so I hope we can use it again. We did our work session. We had our legislative conference Tuesday, Thursday last week, and we did meet a number of legislators and that was a good conference. We'll see what they do now. And like Vance, we did conclude with our new employees